My fine motor skills. I think that's all. We got two pages around number three and one page about.
Change.
Uh-oh.
I read my function. I wonder where we am.
She gets her ass.
Yeah, I got home. I'm saying, you go.
She going.
I want somebody to cut that. You just keep this thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I don't know what it is. They might have different things. Daddy tells me we're sorry you're not able to get that. He said, "Nothing's wrong."
She can have that case. There'll be no problem with it.
Try and be connected again.
Get over here, Scott. Minor changes. Way down.
You know, mine says, "Oops, something went wrong."
Mine says, "We have to pay the bill."
Yeah, nothing.
We're sorry.
I'm calling for a record. I believe in him.
What have you done?
Fair enough.
He was on the road.
You need to print a copy, Steve? Of the minutes.
Matt.
Oh, yeah.
Matt, I got him on email.
Charlie, let me have one of those, please.
You want one? You can have your own.
Just give me another one.
Should be two. Two there. Hurry up, come on.
It's your month, sir. Keep up the good work.
I thought you were leaving by some time.
We, uh... You step forward for many meetings. He failed or something. I don't know. Wait. I got two of the members on the left. A member's to one, number one.
Mine's telling me that.
Well, mine told me that, though. It wasn't my plan.
Well, mine said, "Who's something wrong?" Then I checked this.
Well, if I said this, well, my God, this boy wants that thing to change.
Is that part of number one?
Uh, yeah.
Or number five?
No.
Which number? Does number three have two pieces or number five?
Yeah, three, yeah.
Only got one.
Two pages on number three.
All I got's a first page.
I don't know. Two or no, I can't.
Yep, thanks.
Just a minute, please.
Oh, oh, I got that.
My God.
Hey, Charles.
Minutes, all minutes, and then it's in the P O. One on six.
Charles, I want the resolution, but I don't want the minutes. The amended resolution. But I don't need the minutes. Do you have an amendment?
All right. Benton County County Committee is now in session. Roll down board chair.
The meeting of the December county commission meeting is now in session. Commissioner Arnold, would you give our invocation, please?
That's great. Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we ask you to be with those that help us to make better decisions for our county, that you would do the things that you have us to do with our citizens. Lord, we ask you to be with those that seek and afflicted, that you might reach down and touch their body, feel their will. We ask you, Lord, to all of us at Christmas, remember the reason for this season and bless America, all this thing. We ask you in your name, amen.
Amen. Marty Douglas, would you lead the pledge?
Let's pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Apparently we're pressed.
Gary Carter, Sonny Hall. Three S. Do you think there's a three S? I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Miller.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Price. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. That motion passed. Number two is our citizens forum. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay. Is there anyone from this audience who want to speak? Commissioner Florence, you're recognized. I mean, Director Florence?
I'm not going to take much time. Somebody's told me to be short. But first of all, on behalf of the school system and me personally, I just want to thank you for the support you give our schools. Thank you, and I hope you and your family have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. The last, I think, eight years, we've had a reception for the commission and the board, and it's Christmas time, and there's a lot of things going on. So we decided we might do it early spring when everybody's not so busy. But we will continue that because we have some new commissioners, we have some new school board members, and we need to make sure that they know each other. So we'll do that early spring. And then the only business I have, and I'm not here to discuss politics, but I'll be at the budget meeting in January if you have any questions. But the school board will be voting on a resolution opposing any voucher legislation. Obviously, you've heard a lot. I'm not going to get into the politics, but I would encourage you as a county commissioner to look into that and what that could cost you as a county. And the only political thing I will say is look at the state of Kentucky. They voted for President-elect Trump as heavy as Tennessee did, but they voted as heavy against voucher legislation as they did for the president. So there's a... I'm not here to say or for, but I'm just telling you, if you look at the financial, the physical impact it could have in our county, it could be substantial. So I will be at the budget meeting in January to answer any questions you might have. But I would, as soon as the school board passes that resolution on January the 6th, we'll do like we did last year. Last year, you supported it unanimously, and I think that had a big impact with the state legislation. So I would just ask you to at least do your homework and look into that, and then I'll be at the January 6th, uh, January budget meeting, answer any questions commissioners may have.
Will we have a resolution also in January?
Yes, I will. As soon as the... We have one, and matter of fact, I don't mind going ahead and sending that to Charles. Of course, the board will vote on it January 6th. What we did last year, as soon as the school board passed theirs, send it to Charles, and then he tweaked it for the county. Okay. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Director Florence. Number three is commissioners forum. Do we have a commissioner that would like to speak? Commissioner Keen, you are recognized.
Thank you. Mainly, what I want to talk about tonight is transparency, okay, in government and what it means. As I was looking through a bunch of stuff today, researching, I thought it kind of interesting. There's... There was a quote by James Madison from 1822 that says, "A poplar government without proper information or the means of acquiring it is but a prologue to a farce or a tragedy, or perhaps both. Knowledge will forever govern ignorance, and a people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives." And I thought that was pretty, which I think our founding fathers done an excellent job that we still supposed to follow today. But anyway, back to transparency. How many believe government should be transparent? Local city or county, state, federal, Washington, D.C.? What do you think? Transparency is important, isn't it? Because people need to be able to get their information that they need to see, right? We don't hide anything, right? I mean, we're not supposed to. So transparency is important. And why I say this, looking at Benton County's website, there is only one set of minutes is posted for 2024, okay? Most all the agendas are posted, which is good, okay? But the minutes aren't there for the meetings, you know? And I think that's very important, you know, that we have. I don't know who's responsible for that, but we need to do better at posting the minutes from our meetings. If you look at the committees on BentonCounty.gov, they're incorrect also, or waiting to be updated. How many people's information's not updated? I believe Deborah's is not. Marty still hadn't been. How long you been here?
On the commission.
Yeah.
My information's on there.
Yeah, but it's to be... It says the... I got it today. It said to... Let's see what it says. It says, "Where yet?" I'll find you in a minute. The term they use is "info coming soon," okay? As in Keith Arnold's, as in Brett's, as in Frank's, and Barry's, and they still show Commissioner Hicks on there, and Jeff Murphy and Jerry Price's information's on there. So, back to transparency. I think that's important that we get that fixed. I don't know who's responsible for it, but it needs to be fixed, okay? Because somebody let the ball fall on that. But going back to the minutes and everything, if we have a meeting, we should be posting our minutes. And I would go even farther and post the committee minutes on our website so people can see what the committees are doing. You know, I've always had to say, "Well, you just want to know, you ought to be there." Well, nah, that don't work that way, okay? So anyway, it would be good to be able to have that information, okay? Now, another thing I would like to talk about is that, uh... I'll get there in a minute. In the, uh... And I talked a little bit about this at our special meeting, is capital budgets in the, uh... As our rules and regulations state that we're supposed to follow, right? It says, "Capital projects include purchases of land, buildings and equipment, construction of buildings, roads and bridges, renovation of buildings, and other such improvements that last for many years. Once the method of financing the capital project is approved, the county legislative body must establish a means of paying." And that makes sense, right? Several steps are involved in initiating a capital project, often becoming with... Often beginning with an architect or an engineer. When a county decides that a capital project is necessary, the county legislative body may adopt a resolution authorizing funds to contract with an architect, engineer, or consult service to prepare preliminary plans and cost estimates. According to Tennessee Code Annotated, all contracts for construction and maintenance exceeding $50,000 must be under the supervision of a licensed architect or engineer, okay? Now, I go to our rules. The property committee. The property committee's responsibility is the airport, all county buildings, and the development of plans for future construction, as well as oversight on parks and recreation. A, 4A, page 10 of our rules, say that we, the property committee, will develop plans for management of county buildings, including maintenance, expansion, improvement, or demolition. Number B, consider the needs and options for construction of new facilities and develop recommendations for the commission, including priority location and funding options, which, of course, the budget would be involved in, okay? So that says that. Now, I say all that to say this. Mayor, you were in Big Sandy on Thursday with Commissioner Miller and a contractor and the EMA director looking at drawing up plans for a new building. Would you like to explain to the commission what your plans are?
I don't have any plans yet. I'm doing preliminary work to bring it before the property commission. You can ask Mr. Miller.
Okay. But then that's something the property committee should be doing?
Well, the chairman of the property was there.
But he's not the property committee. He's the chairman.
Y'all can do it if you want to, but in the past, no one has ever had time.
Yeah.
So I was just doing the preliminaries.
Well, I'm just saying that construction, according to our rules...
I know that you hadn't been on the commission, so you may not understand. We've already put that project out for bids. It came in at 2 million dollars.
Mm-hmm. I know that.
So...
And we gave $400,000 back to the state.
No, we haven't given anything back to the state. You're going to vote on that tonight.
Okay, but we are.
But it's expired because it's taken however many years that we've messed around with this project that came in. It was supposed to be around 800,000, and it came in at 2 million dollars.
Okay, I understand that, and I appreciate your comments. But, you know, again, we're going to send 400... If we didn't spend 400,000, why do we have to spend our money to build something? That's all I got. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Any other commissioner? Okay, there are none. You have anything you want to share, Mayor?
I was thinking. Give me just a second.
Okay. County attorney?
No, ma'am.
The only thing I'd like to share is we have an appointment for the... Or two appointments for the airport board, and one of those appointments called in has withdrew his name. So y'all have to tell me what you want to do on that, if you want me to go ahead and provide another name tonight or bring it back up next month on the one that withdrew when we come to the resolution for those appointments. So just be thinking about that and how you want to handle it.
Number five is our approval of the minutes from last month. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Nunnery.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Minutes are approved. Reported the public utility. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Who made the motion?
I did.
Dwayne Fowler and Kenneth Miller. It's got... My computer's not working either.
None either.
That's why I don't know who's making motions. Fowler, Miller.
Do we need to create a password, Scott?
No, no, no. It's working now.
For the moment.
I need... No light. It says that I am not authorized. That's okay. I got it, boys.
Ma'am, sir, can you have just a few minutes to go get the book? Because the computer might have it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll just be... You with that.
It's crashed. Oh, yeah.
You got three on two?
Sorry. I'm going to have to... How many was it? How many did you get? I wish I could... I wish I could have your son. I'm going to have to... I wish I could have... 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 I wish I could have...
You didn't get this one?
Yeah. Yeah, I just have to look at it.
That's how we get.
Switch on. I just got the fronts. Now I can read the second and read the first.
I read the first, but what's the second must not be in order.
This is no room.
I just want to make sure we have a back letter.
Are your tablets work? Are your tablets? Is your tablet working?
It's good.
That's good. Get the eggs.
Get the eggs.
Right hand.
Now say it.
Passenger side. Passenger side. Kid is a passenger side.
Okay.
I know.
Is yours? Is yours up Debbie?
So far.
Everybody else? Wanting to go?
Till the next time.
We have an off location, so.
No, you haven't used any of the cash.
There you go. Rocky's in.
If I quit. They can't recognize me. If I'm good, I'll be tall. I don't need it. My board.
It's a lot better for the record if it's working.
Madam Chairman, mine's not working. Battery now.
It's still saying his is. I don't know. I can't find it.
Sure could use a beverage car.
Okay, but if you're going by a commercial price, would you check his?
This is a battery battery.
Is it going to make it through the meeting?
No, but it will turn on.
Never back this.
Do we have a backup tablet? Then we'll. Okay, then we're going to move on. We're back to number six on your agenda. Report that Public Utilities, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Nunry. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? We're to our resolutions, which is Resolution Number One. This resolution, Bruce Martin's name is pulled from the resolution because he resigned. We can vote on just one name tonight if you would like to, who would be Mr. Phil Davis, or if the Commission would be bodged to letting the mayor introduce the other name that he has to fill in Bruce Martin's name. Does anyone oppose to that tonight?
As a separate resolution?
No, just change the name on that resolution.
Why would we ever vote for more than one person on a single resolution?
Well, we can vote separate if you want to make that motion.
I don't think that'd be appropriate.
Okay.
Why would you ever?
Do you have a motion to separate two names?
I'd like to make a motion that we, I mean, does this take to suspend the rules?
No, just that you want to make a motion that you want to vote on the names separately.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Keen. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose that?
Are you gonna have to have a separate resolution for the other name?
We would.
If you separate them, they'll have to come back.
We can bring the name back next month.
It's not true, Chairman. You can separate a motion, a resolution. You can add it in two or three parts. Or amend it. You can amend this.
Well, we have a motion now to vote separately. Okay? So tonight we'll be voting on reappointing Phil Davis.
Change your motion to separate the names. I can not change it to have two resolutions.
Okay, no. We're not gonna have two resolutions.
Are you pulling it?
Okay. No, would you like to withdraw?
So, we just want to strike one name from the resolution.
You can either strike one name or allow me to change it. Y'all can still vote on them separately as far as the names go.
You can make an amendment.
There should be separate resolutions for each individual needing to be approved for.
You can't put another resolution tonight.
We don't have a resolution.
That's what I'm saying. I can bring it on next month.
Okay, we have voted to vote on the names separate, so tonight we're only voting on one name. And that's Phil Davis. Next month we'll have a new resolution for the other member. So all in favor of appointing Phil Davis to the Airport Board? Yes. He resigned.
Madam Chairman, can I have Phil Davis stand up? I don't know the man.
Oh, I was gonna.
I didn't know who you were. Thank you, sir.
Are you ready yet?
Yes, ma'am. All right, so just for Phil Davis.
Yes, okay. If you are for Phil Davis being reappointed to Airport Board, please vote. Motion by?
It was seconded by me.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
Okay, so now we can vote.
I can't see who makes the motions in the seconds unless you hit your tablet.
Oh, I got you.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Do you think yes or yes?
Okay, while we're on this resolution, the other gentleman's name that the mayor will submit next month may appoint to be here tonight. I would like for him to stand up and introduce himself so that everyone will know. Johnny Bilal, would you mind coming forth, please? Does anybody have any questions for Johnny? Does everybody know him? If you don't, you have any questions? I know he can fly a helicopter.
Yes, he can. And a plane.
Okay, thank you, Johnny. We'll be voting on your resolution for next month. I'm sorry, I apologize.
We'll have some questions for you then, though.
Okay, now we're on Resolution Number Eight. It is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to move funds in the amount of $15,000 within the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Holland. Any questions for Mr. Florence? There are none, so please vote.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries. Do you think yes?
Number Nine on your agenda is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to declare various unusable firearms as surplus property for the purpose of disposal. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Keen. Any questions for the sheriff? Okay. You should have an amendment in your package for this resolution. Okay, I will need a motion and a second for the amendment. Motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Price to make the amendment to Resolution Number be Resolution Number Three. We're on Resolution Number Three. And this is the motion to amend.
Well, they were saying there's a motion and second here, but it looks like something ends up here, so we're getting hung. So I have Ms. Milton and Mike Nunry for the amendment.
Okay. Now we're gonna vote on the amendment.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries.
Now we'll vote on that amendment, on that resolution as we just amended.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
Mike Nunry? Yes, do you think, or we better change our votes? Do you think yes and do you think no?
Number Ten on your resolution, on your agenda is Resolution Four. It is by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $2,994.65 received from various sources to the sheriff's budget for expenditure. I have a motion and a second is by, a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions about Resolution Four? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Number Eleven on the agenda is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to authorize Mayor Mark Ward to apply for and execute contracts or necessary documents in relation to the violent crime intervention grant on behalf of Benton County. I have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Bain.
We need to amend it. We need to amend this.
Okay. Everyone have, do you have your amendment for that resolution?
We have a one for Resolution Five.
For the amendment? Okay, does anybody have any questions about the amendment? Okay, if there are none, so please vote.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Do you think yes?
Okay, now we'll vote on Resolution Number Five as it was just amended. Yes.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries.
Number Twelve on your agenda is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $33,286.62 to the travel line item in the sheriff's budget for mental health transports. I have a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Fowler. Any questions about this resolution? There are none, so everyone please vote. Okay. Commissioner Preston?
My conversation will pertain to this resolution, just not the grant that the resolution mentioned several times. This resolution is a matter pertaining to the county's inmate population. John Penion, supervisor slash director now for three years over the county's inmate population. He has shown the county solid. He has shown the county consistent state prison inmate dollars that the Budget Committee has asked him for. In fact, he's done better than what budget has asked him for. And I'm gonna go over some of the numbers with you. The numbers can't be denied. Numbers don't lie. They come from the county's trustees office. The paper is called the Contracted Prisoner Board Dollar Transactions Account Analysis. The Budget Committee, for the budget that we are in right now, estimated that the state prison dollars amount going into the general fund this year to be $225,000. Actual dollars. An actual dollar is what has already been put into the general fund. The actual dollars already applied to the general fund for this year is a little better than $190,000. This is five payments state prison dollars in which there will be twelve. December will be the sixth payment, and the budget's general fund estimate will have been met. The budget's general fund estimate will have been funded. I'm gonna take us back to April, May of this year for at least those attending some of the many budget meetings. Here's what some of us might have forgot. August, excuse me, account 178. It's got a title called Other Capital Projects. Our Budget Committee created a line item in this account entitled it Contracted Prisoner Boarding. Page 103 on my budget. In my budget, it shows under revenues received in this account to be an estimated $225,000 state prison dollars going into that account. Same account, but not under the income and revenues. Under expenditures, line item 718, titled Motor Vehicles, shows budget estimate of $225,000 being spent on sheriff's cars. Root it for yourself. Page 103 in my budget. Every state prisoner dollar after the first $225,000 will be going into this account, account 178. The first five months of prison dollars has averaged $38,000 a month. The first five months total this year is $73,554 greater than the first five months last year. Our jail director and his staff has outperformed budget's 2024 estimation, estimated a little over $249,000 coming to the general fund from state prisoners. They exceeded budget's estimate by $87,381. Here we have an account, Other Capital Project, that Budget Committee created a new line item to purchase vehicles for the sheriff's office, estimated at a cost of $225,000. I've given you the facts. Here we have a resolution from the sheriff asking for one transport car, better than $33,000, and the Budget Committee voted not to recommend this resolution to the full body. I'm gonna say it again, the Budget Committee Tuesday night voted not to recommend this resolution to the full body. Ultimately, you commissioners and myself, we have the right to vote no on this resolution. But doing so just to be on the winning side, doing so just because somebody don't like the sheriff, those are the wrong reasons for a no vote. If you've been directed, if you've been coached by somebody in this house to vote no on this resolution, you don't want to hurt their feelings. Well, hurt their feelings.
Commissioner Preston, your time's up.
Vote yes and hurt their feelings. I promise you, they'll get over it. I yield the floor.
Okay, I'd like to ask a question. Well, you can, but first of all, what resolution are you talking about, Commissioner Preston? About mental health transports?
Yes.
Commissioner Milton, you're recognized.
The budget last year took the prisoner board money and split it evenly. One half going into the general fund, one half going into Capital Projects 178 for purchases of sheriff's vehicles. That is factual. That's what was done. It would be nice if we didn't have to correct at every meeting. I mean, this is, this doesn't really have anything to do with the monies that was budgeted last year. I would like, John, would you, I'd like for John to address something in this that we did not, in relation that I don't believe we had the other night budget. Uh, John, we.
On the mental health transporter. We get it every year. We've already got all the supplies, the clothes, jackets, and softwear. We have it for kids, not for people. We, one, the transport van that we use already for a whole year for middle transport, we keep that for even transport, so we need. I was requesting to take the remainder of this $33,000 change to buy an SUV, go and put a cage in it. It can't be no lights, no back, no that stuff on there, because that's the amount of transport, so nobody knows what's in that vehicle. And I was hoping that we could appropriate that and provide this, because it's easier to transport one or two, making the smaller SUV purses, the high passenger van, in some places that we have to go with. And after a year, you didn't miss that. I mean, the SUV, we could take a shotgun back, they can't put it in the fleet, and use it as a patrol vehicle after a year of having the SUV. If we don't spend this, I have to give it back to the state. Occasionally, they roll it over, but if you roll over, it's something happens, that's your non-unionment, and you'll get less next time to go talk to the parents.
Anyone having questions for John?
I'm here.
Yes.
I'd just like to say this, we don't, by taking this smaller SUV, a lot of times we only have to transport one or two. We have to take a full-size van, a transport van. It just saves money, it just makes sense to do it, and they're giving us money for the vehicle we already have, as y'all have said. All the equipment, all we have to do is move it from the older van over to the newer van, and without all that, there's enough money in there to take care of this vehicle. I mean, it'd be crazy to give the money back what it's out there appropriated for.
Move your equipment in-house.
Any other questions? Okay, I don't think there are any more questions, so if you're for the resolution, please vote. If you're not, please vote.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries.
Number Thirteen on the resolution is by Director of Schools Mark Florence to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $280,000 within the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Holland and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions for Mr. Florence? There are none, so please vote.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
Jerry Holland?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries.
Number Fourteen on your agenda has been, has been pulled by the mayor by the request of our assessor, Ryan Hall. He says that the wording on this needs to be changed, so he will be presenting another resolution next month. So that one is pulled. And he said, he will be here to speak on it. Number Fifteen on your agenda is Resolution Nine. It's to, whatever, the remaining balance of the CDBG grant contract for reconciliation of final invoices and payments.
Deobligate.
Deobligate. To deobligate the remaining balance. We have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Nunry. Any questions? Commissioner Keen?
Madam Chairman, can we keep this? We have to give it back, but I mean, is there any way we can keep it for next year? Is it planning on something?
So you can only have one CDBG grant out at a time. This one has expired. As long as we're holding on to it, we can't reapply. So Matty Cushman. our grant writer, contacted me a couple weeks ago and said, you need to have them to deobligate this one, so you can reapply next year and the grant will be four hundred and fifty thousand for equipment, like new trucks and box vans, I mean, box trailers and stuff like that, whatever Mr. King may need at the EMA. So it will, it'll help us in the long run. This is a 2019 grant, so it hadn't been used and it's expired. But we can't reapply.
That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I see none, so let's vote, please.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries. Do you think yes?
Number sixteen on the agenda is Resolution Ten, by Mayor Mark Ward to seek approval and passage of a proposal for acceptance from T.D.O. concerning the interchange at six forty-one slash I forty. I have a motion by Keith Arnold and a second by Dwayne Fowler. Any questions about this resolution?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Has the county attorney looked at this? I mean, what's his take on this? Are we good?
King, it looked to me like yes.
Okay.
It looked like there's some questions about some signing, some way.
We're good.
It didn't look to be a major deal, and I wouldn't think any commission would have any objection.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you have it.
Any other questions? Please vote.
Jerry Frost?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries. Do you think yes?
Number seventeen is appointing the notaries. We have four. The names are Susan Wiltz, Susan Turnvoe, Shelley Pinson, and Bridget Lambert. Need a motion and a second to approve the notaries. A motion by Commissioner Nunry and a second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor of the notaries, say aye. Anyone opposed? We're down to number eighteen on the agenda, which is any other business. Do we have anybody that'd like to say anything? Commissioner Price, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll make it real quick. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, I was handed this document and shame on me for not reviewing it earlier as to portion of it. It's the Benton County Commission Rules of Order and Procedures that was omitted and adopted on September sixteenth of 2019 on page nine, item number two under Law Enforcement Committee. This committee is responsible for law enforcement, fire protection, emergency communication, the emergency management agency, and the animal shelter, and there's a list of duties under that. I would like, anytime we've got business with any of those entities, I would like for, to invite the representatives from the animal shelter, fire, whoever, that falls under that umbrella, and I apologize for not doing that earlier, and encourage those folks to to come join us in our committee meeting and the full body. I yield the floor, thank you.
Any other commissioner? Want to have any announcements or anything you'll say? Commissioner Mike?
So I don't know if everyone's heard it, but our Economic Development Director Jennifer Wheatley had a heart attack this morning, and she's in Paducah right now going under open-heart surgery, so y'all please keep her and her family in your prayers.
Anyone else got any announcements or want to say anything? We adjourned. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I was gonna ask Mark, how did that Smith property thing, their representation, what amount it's buying for?
Don't know yet.
Anyone else? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? We are adjourned.
Charlie, make a note to never put people in the, ever. Here's your twenty dollars.